I call this meeting to order at 7:06. Pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the name of liberty and justice for all.
Can we get a roll call, please?
Thank you. Chair Kevin Rooney. Commissioner Edwin Borkas.
Here.
Commissioner Edith Flores.
Present.
Commissioner Christopher Sines.
Present.
So at this time, I'm going to open up the public hearing. If anybody has anything to say in regards to anything that is not on the agenda, you have three minutes to speak. Please state your name. So see no interest, close the public hearing, move on to the consent calendar.
Chair Sines, I move to approve the minutes from the June 12 meeting.
Second the motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So we're going to move the action minutes, move it over to the next meeting. So we're going to move on to public, set matters, public hearing. I actually will make a motion to move matter number two to the very end.
I move to approve.
A second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. So we're going to move on to...
Item three.
Item three.
So Mr. Chairman, item number two is now item number six, is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
So item number three, we're going to open up the staff report, item number three.
Thank you Commissioner Sines. Before you is a request for consideration to subdivide one lot into six lots within the RG Garden Multi-Family Residential Zone for the construction of five detached two-story residential condominium units and one common lot located at 4232 La Rica Avenue. The project is exempt from the provisions of the California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to sections 15303 and sections 15315 for minor land divisions. The parcel is currently developed with a single-family home that will be demolished for the construction of the proposed project. The property is one parcel with a lot area of approximately 22,893 square feet. The lot-ish, lot's shape is rectangular in shape and is generally flat. As you can see from the aerial... You can see this is the lot here, adjacent lot, and the adjacent single-family residential properties here to the north and also to the east here and multifamily residential south. Again, the subject property zoning is RG Garden Multi-Family Residential. Again, the property is located here, this slide here shows a depiction of the current zoning map. And again, you have single-family residential uses along zones, along Clark Street, and also garden multifamily residential uses along Bolden Park Boulevard and along La Rica. And again, it transitions to multifamily residential three, which is in the darker, darker brown. Again, the proposed project requires the approval of a tentative map and a development plan design review to allow the proposed building architecture and site layout. The site's general planned land use designation allows for a maximum density of 12 units per acre. The proposed project density will be 9.5 units per acre. And based on the current lot size, the maximum project density is 6.3 units per the acre. Again, the applicant is proposing five two-story residential units. A single driveway is proposed along the southerly portion of the lot to provide vehicular access. Then you have unit one, unit two, unit three, four, and five. As you can see, again, the driveway that allows access to those units. And along the northerly property line are the private open spaces for each of those units, which is one, two, three, four, and five. In addition to that, you have parking spaces that are also located adjacent to those units. And then you have an open space that is between units two and three. Again, the common open, common area open spaces will be restricted through CCNRs and will be required as part of the project to address ongoing maintenance and upkeep of all common areas, including driveways, walls, common area landscaping. The common open space areas haven't been committed for specific use. However, as part of the landscape plan, the applicant will be including amenities such as picnic tables and outdoor furniture, plus a barbecue area. The municipal code requires two parking spaces per unit and one additional surface parking space where a detached dwelling unit contains five or more bedrooms. A total of 14 parking spaces will be provided. Each unit will have a two-car garage, while two units will have an additional surface parking, while there will be two guest parking spaces. A condition of approval included in the tentative map requires in the CCNRs that the parking or storage of recreational vehicles, trailers, boats, all-terrain vehicles are prohibited. The project proposes a Spanish architectural design. The architectural features include a hip-style roof with flat concrete tile material, wall projection, stucco exterior with smooth stucco window trim finish, vinyl windows of varying shapes, wood shutters, arch recessed doors, and stone wainscoting. The combination of the materials and architectural variation reduces the scale and massing of the proposed structures. The HOA will be responsible for maintaining the exteriors of the buildings, including the garage doors. And again, this is an elevation of unit one. These elevations consist of the west and south elevation. As you can see here, the west, this is unit one, which is going to be facing La Rica. So again, in review of this project, we requested from the applicant that the unit actually face the street instead of it being a side or essentially a side. But we wanted the entry so that way it was compatible to the rest of the neighborhood. And here you see the south elevation, where you see the garage. We have a balcony, you have decorative window treatment with window shutters on the south elevation, which would be facing the driveway. Here, unit one are the east and north elevations. This, the north elevation would be facing the exterior private area. This is the floor plan, floor plan for unit one. The applicant is proposing two different floor plans, each containing between four and five bedrooms, between three and a half and five bathrooms. All of the dwelling units are two stories, again, with the garage. And the floor areas range from 1,0824 to 2,394 square feet. And that's excluding the garage area. Again, unit one would consist specifically, again, this is the first floor and the second floor, which largely consists of four bedrooms and three and a half baths. Again, this is a depiction of unit two. Again, this is the west elevation, south elevation, front entry. Again, you have decorative features along all the elevations, provide alternative materials. And this is the east and north elevation. And this is the floor plan. So unit two would be, floor would consist of 1,0899 square feet. This would include five beds and four baths. And this is a depiction of units three and four, which are similar. Again, you can see the alternative material, which is the stone to break up the massing on the building along the front elevation as well. The west and north elevations for... The floor plans for units three, four, three and four will include four beds and four baths. Finally, unit five. And again, this is the unit that is on the easterly, the most easterly elevation, which is one of the largest units at 2,394 square feet. And that'll include a floor plan of five beds and five baths. Here is the first and second floor. In conclusion, staff was required to notice all those within 300 feet of the parcel. During the review period, staff did not receive any letters of concern or any phone calls from any adjacent neighbors or concerned residents. Staff recommends that the planning commission adopt resolution PC 1915, approving the tentative track map to facilitate the residential development. I also like to add that the applicant is present for any further questions. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you Ron. So before I open up the public hearing, does, do any of the commissioners have any questions? So I open the public hearing. Anybody that has any, anything to say about this project, feel free to come up, you have three minutes. Anybody in favor of this project, feel free to come up, you have three minutes, please state your name and address. See no interest. Anyone opposed? Seeing no interest, the public hearing is closed. Commissioners? So I do have a question for the applicant, just, just kind of a rough guess. Yeah, please. The estimated time of completion from groundbreaking to...
Roughly about a year. Yeah, it depends on when we start, if we start in, if we go to a rainy season, it might be a little bit longer. But we started in, probably in September or so, October, we should be finished by end of summer.
This is my only question, thank you.
So before leaving the podium, would you please state your name?
My name is Steve, my name is Steve Chen, last name C-H-E-N, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, do we have a motion?
Chair, I motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes, 3-0. So staff, we can move on to item four?
Yes, Planning Technician Melissa Chipris will be providing the presentation.
Okay. Good evening, honorable members of the committee. So today before you, we have conditional permit application CP 881 requesting approval of a child daycare facility located at 13334 Ramona Boulevard, Unit I. Okay, so on May 9, 2019, the planning division received the said conditional use permit from Joy and Crystal Cyprian. The proposed child daycare facility will be located in the President Plaza within the mixed-use two zone and is bound by Ramona Boulevard and Foster Avenue. The subject property site is approximately 77,895 square feet and is rectangular in shape. Here we have street views of the subject property. The site is currently developed with a mixture of retail shops, restaurants, and office uses. The proposed facility is to be located at the rear of the property. So as we can see right in the corner, so this is where the proposed unit is in Suite I. The facility will be 1,680 square feet and will consist of an office, three classrooms, a kitchen area, and two child and one adult restrooms. There would be a maximum of four employees and 32 children at any given time on the site. And the hours of operation for the child daycare facility will be Monday through Friday from 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. So during the 10-day noticing period, staff did receive a notice from a concerned resident who had received the notice of public hearing. He expressed concern whether the children were receiving sufficient outdoors time. Staff did coordinate with the applicant and the applicant did provide a schedule that states that children would be getting two hours of outdoor time a day, so once in the morning for an hour and then once in the evening as well. During that time, the applicant had notified me that children will be receiving classroom-like activities outdoors. So everything that, that is integrated during their, their time at the facility inside is what they would be doing outside as well. But no other concerns were received during this time. So staff is requesting the planning commission to adopt resolution PC 1913 to approve the proposed child daycare facility. That concludes my presentation.
Commissioners, before I open up the public hearing, any questions?
I have a question, just what, what are the ages for the childcare?
So for Unit I, the applicant is planning to have zero to 24-month-year-olds, so a total of 17 between those ages.
Okay, thank you.
Does the applicant currently occupy any of the spaces between I and M? I know that I and M are kind of a few spaces apart, but are they going to be, it's connected?
No, so they don't occupy any in between, it's just I and M will be separate.
And I guess this is a question for the applicant. But when the students do get outdoor activity time, is that going to be like, is there like a back door? Do they go outside? Is it like...
Yes, I know the applicant does have photos to provide, I don't know if we're able to pull them up, but they do have a tarped area in the rear of their unit. So it's private, nobody can, you know, walk in as they please, they would have to go through the unit to get to it.
Perfect, thank you. So at this time, I'm going to open up, this time I'm going to open up the public hearing. If there's anybody in favor, you have three minutes, please state your name.
Josie Plata, resident of Baldwin Park. I live very close to it, that's why I got a letter concerning the impact. I did not, I don't see any impact towards my house. And I am the gentleman that requested some information about the quality time for the young kids. And I have not, and I wonder if anybody has gone out on-site to take a visual inspection of it. I hope that everything works out. And my concern is if we're going to be bringing in child cares into the city, we should all, as adults and as city officials, have an interest on them. And my concern was if they were going, every one of them that I've seen has outdoor areas. This one, I'm finding out that it's behind. And my question now would be, has anybody gone out there to inspect it? And I would like to say also that when I did go to the city to, my concern, everybody was very professional. And the phone call that I got today was very professional. And I'll state it again, I think it's the third time, has anybody gone out there to inspect it visually? Thank you.
Thank you.
So before you leave the podium, would you spell your last name for me, for the record?
It's Plata, that's P-L-A-T-A.
Thank you, sir.
If there's anybody else that wants to speak in favor, feel free to come up.
So staff has not physically gone out just yet. The applicant does plan on submitting plans to do interior work. And that's when building inspectors would go out to make sure that the unit itself is complying with current code. The applicant not only has to comply with city standards, but they also have to comply with state standards. So I know the state does go out to evaluate the unit as well. And then the fire department also goes out to do their own inspections. So not yet, but we will.
Thank you. So seeing no interest, anybody opposed? See no interest, I now close the public hearing. Commissioners? So I guess I do have another question. The site doesn't operate as a daycare currently, or...
So Unit I currently does not operate as a daycare facility, but Unit M is currently operating. And we will get to that.
So the, the, so Unit M that's currently operating as daycare, is that, so the current outdoor facility that the children use for Unit M, is that going to be the same facility that Unit I is going to be using?
No, I believe they each have their own private area in the back of their unit.
Commissioners?
Now, is it a different owner? Because I noticed when I went by there today, there is a, it's been there for a while, actually. I remember it three, two or three years ago or more. Are they the same owners or they're different on one of the existing unit that's, that's a childcare?
The existing unit and this current Unit I are going to be the same owner. They're just different units and they have different addresses, which is the reason for separate conditional use permits, because they would also get two different licenses from the state. So we wanted to make sure that they were...
Is the applicant the current owner, the current childcare, the applicant, is that the same person that's there now? Or they're going to be taking over...
No, it's the same applicant, that would be in both units.
But, okay, but the previous, it's somebody different?
Yes, yeah, so it was somebody different. I do have a little bit of history for Unit M.
Okay, no worries, I just want to know the new, the new applicant, okay. I move to approve the request.
Mr. President, if I may, point of information for the record, just to make sure these motions are very clear for the record. The motion, as I understand it, Commissioner Borkas, is to approve resolution PC 1913 allowing a conditional use permit CP 881 to allow a childcare facility within the mixed-use two zone location 1334 Ramona Boulevard, case number CP-881, is that correct?
I move to approve.
I'll go ahead and second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion, motion passes 3-0. So staff, we can move on to item number five.
So today before you is conditional permit application CP 884 requesting approval to allow the continuation of an existing childcare facility located at 13310 Ramona Boulevard, Unit M. So upon review of the applicant's request to add a childcare facility within the center, staff determined that the existing conditional use permit was invalid. Conditional use permit CP 834 was approved by the planning commission on April 27, 2016. And on June 15, 2016, the applicant withdrew the request. Since the applicant, since this current applicant acquired the facility in 2018 and has been operating without an approved conditional use permit, therefore, the applicant is requesting the approval of conditional, of a conditional use permit to allow the continuation of an existing childcare facility. Okay, so on June 27, 2019, the planning division received the said conditional use permit from Joy and Crystal Cyprian. The proposed child daycare facility will be located in the President Plaza within the mixed-use two zone and is bound by Ramona Boulevard and Foster Avenue. The subject site is approximately 77,895 square feet and is rectangular in shape. The site is currently developed with a mixture of retail shops, restaurants, and office uses. The proposed facility is to be located at the rear of the property. The facility will be 960 square feet and consists of an office, two classrooms, a kitchen area, and child and adult restrooms. There would be a maximum of three employees and 17 children at any given time on-site. And the hours of operation will be Monday through Friday from 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. And here is the floor plan for Unit M. So again, during the 10-day noticing period, we did receive a phone call from a concerned resident. Again, the same as for the first unit, they were concerned about outdoor time. But each unit will have their own private area for children to play for two hours out of the day when they are there. But staff is requesting the planning commission to adopt resolution PC 1914 to approve the proposed child daycare facility. And that concludes my presentation.
Before we move on, I also like to make note that the applicant for unit, for Unit M, that existing daycare facility, they were operating with the valid business license. So again, as the planner had described, that the, that the existing CUP that was approved was invalid. But through our review, we found out that we needed to have them process a CUP so that way they were in conformance with the code. But just like to reiterate that since acquiring the site, they have been operating with a valid business license and also a valid permit from the California State Childcare Licensing Office.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions before we open up the public hearing?
So this, this unit will be what ages, up to?
Two to four-year-olds.
Two to four, thanks.
And I have a question. How is the parking situation when they go drop off the kids?
So per our code, it is one space for every employee and one space for every eight children that the daycare facility has, which is why we did cap them at three employees and 17 children for Unit M and four employees with 32 children for Unit I. So we did calculate the spaces. The shopping center itself has 106 spaces, so that is the reason for the cap, so parking should not be an issue.
Okay, so they don't have any designated parking for facility or for, for this one?
No, they don't, they don't have to...
So they can go anywhere?
Yeah, they can, yeah.
So now I open up the public hearing. Anybody that wants to come and speak in favor, you have three minutes, please state your name. Anybody opposed? See no interest, now close the public hearing. Commissioners, any further questions? Do we... Do we have a motion to approve the conditional use permit?
I motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And point of clarification, Mr. Chairman, that was a motion to pass Resolution PC 1914 to approve a conditional use permit CP 884 to allow a childcare facility within the mixed use two zone, location 13310 Ramona Boulevard, case number CP 884.
That is correct. So the resolution passes 3-0. So staff, now we can bring back item two.
Yes. Associate Planner Erica Ramirez will be giving the presentation.
Good evening, honorable members of the committee. Today before you is conditional permit application CP 878, requesting approval of a recycling facility located at 14824 Ramona Boulevard. As you may recall, this item was continued from the Planning Commission meeting of May 8, 2019. At the said meeting, members of the commission requested additional information pertaining to traffic and noise. City staff has conducted the requested research and analysis, which will be presented to you tonight. It has also been included in your staff report. Prior to that information, I'll give a brief overview. The proposed recycling facility is within the industrial commercial zone. The subject site is approximately 10,854 square feet and rectangular in shape. It stretches from Ramona Boulevard to Beddila Street. The site is currently developed with a small barber shop fronting Ramona Boulevard and 20 parking spaces. The proposed facility is located at the rear of the property, closer to Beddila Street. The facility would consist of one proposed metal container of 160 square feet. There would be two employees on-site, and the hours of operation would be Monday through Saturday, 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., and Sundays, 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Proposed improvements include landscaping along the southeast portion of the property. According to the City of Baldwin Park zoning code, recycling facilities cannot be sited within a 3,000-square-foot radius from another recycling facility. The proposed facility meets the requirement. Before you are the plans of the container and landscaping. The container is 20 feet by 8 feet, and proposed landscaping includes lilac trees and succulent grass-like plants. City engineering staff conducted a vehicle volume report and analyzing traffic on Ramona Boulevard and on Beddila Street from June 4 to June 6. Counts were taken during the school year with no adverse weather conditions. The results are presented before you on the chart, which demonstrates that westbound vehicles along Beddila Street far surpasses that of westbound vehicles along Ramona. Therefore, it's staff recommendation that the entry to the proposed recycling facility remain from Ramona. City planning staff conducted research to determine potential noise levels associated with the proposed recycling facility. The City of Baldwin Park sets a maximum noise level for each of the zones within the city. In the industrial zone, the maximum allowed noise level is 65 dB. Staff has provided examples of common sounds that emit the allowable noise in the chart presented before you tonight. In addition, there's an increase in the allowable noise levels at various increments and in specific durations over a 24-hour period. According to the chart, the maximum allowed noise level in the industrial zone is 85 dB for less than one minute per 24 hours a day. The peak noise level of glass breaking was found to be 163 dB. Therefore, conditions associated to noise have been incorporated in the approving resolution for your consideration tonight. Brandywine, who initiated, who initially submitted a letter of concern to the city dated April 5 in objection to the recycling facility, contacted staff during the 10-day review period to advise they maintain the same concerns voiced in their original letter. This letter is included in your agenda packets. Staff is requesting that the Planning Commission either adopt Resolution PC 1908 to approve the proposed recycling facility with conditions, or to deny the proposed recycling facility. The applicant's also here if you have any questions.
Commissioners, any questions before I open up the public hearing? So I'm going to open up the public hearing. Anybody in favor of the project, feel free to come up. You have three minutes. Please state your name. Anybody opposed? Three minutes. Please state your name.
President of Baldwin Park, Jesse Plata. And I walked in here, and I didn't even know that this was going on, a recycling right here on Ramona and Beddila, so I would say that's very close to this area right here. We do have a lot of traffic at certain hours. You have to wait quite a bit to maneuver on those streets. Now, there's going to bring in more, and that is surrounded also by residential. I don't, I don't know if the residential were informed adequately about this going on. I live a distance from here, but I am a resident of Baldwin Park, and I would say maybe you should take a little time back and re-notify the residential, and also look at the traffic. That street right there, Ramona and Beddila, it takes some time at, during traffic hours to maneuver through there. Now, when you're bringing in also recycling, I never seen a recycling center being properly maintained, and by that I mean trash and stuff like that, orders that they start also creating. I would say that residents should be informed again about this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody wishing to speak? See no more interest, and now close the public hearing.
My name is Tracy Dam. I'm a resident in Baldwin Park for over 10 years. This is also the first time that I ever heard about this. I really don't think it's a great idea, especially Ramona. We have, there's a lot of traffic already. There's a lot of residential area around that area, and even with that, Irwindale has a huge, huge facility for recycling already. And it's, Irwindale's not that far from here. It's like five-minute drive up. I know that, you know, they took care of this as like 300 square, like the zone area, but it's still really close by. So I don't think this is necessary, to be honest with you. But I have, thank you.
Ma'am, would you please step back to the podium and spill your last name for the record?
D-A-M.
I'm sorry.
Dam, D-A-M, as in...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else wishing to speak? I now close the public hearing. Commissioners, any questions? The applicants?
Yes, the applicant is present. He can tell us why he wants to put a recycling plant there, what's his concerns from the talk about this? I'm going to refer to the applicant.
Hello, my name is Antonio Salazar. I didn't hear your question. Can you repeat, please?
We can, we can, we can translate. Si le gusta mejor hablar en español?
Está bien. No entendí su pregunta.
Si la pregunta es, ¿qué es su idea y su meta en tener esta planta de recyclables aquí en este, en este dirección?
Primero que nada, colectar todo el material posible para también poder crear mayor facilidad a la limpieza del área y bueno, también cumplir con todos los requisitos que la comisión puso, que de hecho se cumplieron. Acerca del tráfico, por eso se hizo un estudio para ver dónde se determinaba mejor la entrada y la salida, y se cumplió también con eso. Entonces, pero la meta es eso, tener más limpia la zona, ya que cumplimos con los tres mil pies de no reciclajes alrededor.
¿Y su experiencia en otras plantas de este tipo de recyclables? ¿Cuántos años usted?
Commissioner Borges, before we move on to the second question, we'd like to translate the first part.
So the first question was, what was the applicant's reason for wanting to open a recycling facility? His reason is to obviously collect as much trash from the area, to keep the area as clean as he can. In the matter of traffic, that he's saying that that's the reason why we conducted a traffic study to determine if it was going to be an issue with that area, and there was no issue, right? Yeah, and the traffic study determined that it wouldn't be an issue integrating a recycling facility at that location.
Thank you so much for the perfect translation. La segunda pregunta es, ¿su experiencia en otras ciudades o cuántos años tiene en este trabajo?
Más de diez años, con cuatro reciclajes en diferentes ciudades.
Okay, we're going to go ahead and translate.
So this question was, what other cities or how many other recycling facilities the applicant has experience with? The applicant has opened four other recycling facilities in different locations.
Have you, buenas tardes, ¿ha tenido algún problema con nosotros, este recycling centers? Any problems with the other recycling centers? Any citations? Alguna multa? No, gracias.
Yeah, so the question was if there have been any issues with the previous recycling facilities that the applicant has opened, and he has never received any notice of violations, no fines to those other facilities.
Any additional questions? So we're going to need a motion, either in approval or denial of Resolution PC 1908.
Staff, Ron, what was, what's the name of the, the building there? You know, it's next to the Paloma Development, but that nice...
The red car?
Yeah, the, thank you, the red car, that they're redoing and refurbishing and all that. That's, you know, that's going to play a part in my, in my concerns, because we have a brand-new development that I voted for, that it just brings a, is a beautiful addition to the city. And then we got that red car, that there's so many aspirations for that place, which is going to bring additional traffic to that area, so that's a big concern of mine.
Sure, as your, my fellow commissioners have probably heard on the last recording of you weeks ago, we first considered this application. I think, like, I think recycling is a very important, important thing. I think introducing a facility or encouraging recycling is a very positive thing to protect our environment. I do have some concerns regarding future development of the red car building. I was fully in support of that development, and that's something that I expressed to the developer when they, when they were here. So this is, this is very, it's a, kind of very difficult, so I don't know, do we have any indication of future development of that red car building? Is there any communication? Like, do we know what could possibly be? Is it going to be like a small retail store that might only bring two people at a time? Is it, like a restaurant that might bring more traffic? I guess...
If I understand your question, so, I mean, there, that site is currently being discussed as far as a future tenant user for that building? And again, it could be a number of uses, a retail use, office use, a restaurant use, which potentially could bring additional traffic to that area. But as of right now, there isn't a specific user for that building, but the, the city and is actively in talks with future, future tenants of that building. But as of now, there isn't a specific use for that building.
So commissioners, if we're going to need a motion...
So Chair Science, because of that, the uncertainty of what could possibly go in that, that red car, which the developer has already started making some, some really nice changes, and they really don't want to disturb it with, you know, anything else, I'm, I'm going to move to deny this request.
So just confirming that's...
Yes, Mr. Chairman, if I may, just a moment. If you are inclined to deny, Commissioner, you will need to make some specific findings. One of the findings would be the zone integrity and character. If you believe that the traffic and noise will impair the integrity and character of the zone in which it is located, you will need to state that on the record for the finding. The other is safety and welfare. If you believe that the noise and traffic will be detrimental to public interest, health, safety, and the convenience or welfare of the public, you'll need to state that on the record, because in your motion, we will be adopting findings as well.
And, 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 you couldn't have said it better. Pretty much, I wanted, everything you just said, I want to raise those concerns in denying this motion.
Okay, then if you, if I may, may I rephrase the motion based on what I believe you have stated?
Whatever makes it easier to make this...
Okay, then my understanding of the commissioner's motion is it is a motion to deny PC 1908, and adopting the findings of fact and denying a request for a conditional use permit for the operation of recycling facility pursuant to Table 153.050.020 in the city's municipal code, and adopting the findings that the use will impair the integrity and character of the zone in which it is located, and that the use will be detrimental to public interest, health, safety, convenience, or welfare of the public. I believe that's your motion.
Yes.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor of denying Resolution PC, or adopting Resolution PC 1908, denying the request for conditional use permit?
Aye.
Aye.
The, the motion, the motion passes Resolution PC 1908 in denial. I just want to reaffirm for everybody in this room that the recycling facility is not inherently... not inherently a bad thing. It's actually a very positive thing for the community, and I think that if the applicant can find a location that's more suitable for this type of facility, that we would welcome that application, certainly with open arms, I guess. But this just is not the ideal location, and I just want to make sure that I make that comment.
Mr. President, could we have a translation of that in order that the applicant knows that the use is a very good use, but if they want to pick another location, it might be looked upon more favorable?
So, si vamos a... How does he deny? Okay, nos han probado la aplicación, pero le queremos decir otra vez que el uso es algo que sí queremos ver en la ciudad de Baldwin Park, no más es el lote donde lo están queriendo poner. Es, you know, el tráfico que se junta allí en Bedillo y Ramona, sí le va a ser más difícil a los residentes que viven allí, y también para las nuevas casas que ponieron allí en la esquina de esa área. So, todo el ruido, los olores que van a llegar hasta allí, eso es más lo que están pensando. So, si pueden encontrar algún otro lugar para poner el facility, sí es algo que sí queremos ver en la ciudad.
If we can also convey that we appreciate their patience and for going through all the traffic studies and everything that we asked of them, it wasn't something in vain. We were really looking for that information. But we thank them again for submitting the application, and we hope that they find a site more suitable, and of course, we look forward to it.
So, le queremos dar muchas gracias, you know, por su paciencia. Sí, sabemos que sí ha durado mucho tiempo. It was, first, right? Yeah, su aplicación sí estaba continuado de otra junta, pero otra vez muchas gracias por su paciencia, y sí queremos trabajar con usted para poder abrir un recycling facility en un lugar aquí en la ciudad. Yeah.
Thank you, Melissa. I'd also like to make note that the applicant does have 10-day appeal period from the date of this denial to appeal to the city council.
So, van a hacerle denio a esta aplicación, pero todavía tiene 10 días para meter una...
Una apelación.
Apelación al city council, si usted.
La pregunta es, entiendo todos los reglos, los reglamentos, se cumplió con todos los reglamentos, incluso el estudio de tráfico, incluso el ruido. Son solo 160 pies cuadrados, no se produce ruido. Son solo 160 pies cuadrados en donde se colecta y se guarda el material en el contenedor, lo cual no produce olores. Se puede incluso, si ustedes lo aprueban, proveer un reporte de pest control cada cierto tiempo. No veo, honestamente y con respeto, la negativa de esto. Hablan de tráfico cuando se hizo el estudio de tráfico y no afecta. Tiene 2 entradas, una entrada, perdón, y una salida, por lo cual podemos manejar perfectamente bien el tráfico. Las horas de tráfico en esa área es de 7 a 9 de la mañana, y en la tarde, después de las 4 de la tarde. Las horas de operación estamos pensando de 10 a 5 de la tarde, si no mal recuerdo. Entonces, no afecta. El departamento de engineering también hizo ese estudio, no se está afectando. Entonces, honestamente, no sé cuando uno cumple con todo, se niega, y cuando no se cumple en ciertas cosas, se aprueba. Ese es mi sentir en el momento.
Yes, so the applicant is expressing concern because, you know, he's complied with all of the conditions that planning, building, and public works have given to him, including the traffic study, and it, noise only reaches 100 and, what is it? 100 and... ¿Qué tan lejos será el ruido? Siento... Oh, okay. Oh, okay, I'm sorry. So, yeah, with the traffic study, he's saying that the traffic study found that the peak traffic hours are 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 a.m., and then 4:00 p.m. on, and his hours of operation are only going to be from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. So he's, you know, wondering, in the container that he plans on having, there's no odors that would escape from there, so his concern, or, you know, worry is if he's complying with all the standards that we've given already, and the standard, and all of the studies that came back, he doesn't understand why this is an issue.
Perdón, otra de las cosas que estamos proponiendo es landscaping para que los residentes en el área de Ramona no vean el contenedor. Otra de las cosas, diario se mueve el material precisamente para no producir ese olor. Entonces, nunca se guarda ahí. Al final del día, se mueve ese material. El contenedor en realidad es simbólico. ¿Por qué? Porque diario se mueve ese material. Entonces, no hay olor en realidad.
Mr. Chairman, if I may respond very briefly to the applicant regarding some of the issues he has raised.
Please.
Number 1, sir, the vote has been taken, so there's no further communication from the commissioners. You do have the option to appeal, but I did want to address some of the things that you've said. The commission did not deny your application based on traffic alone. That is true, that the traffic study alone showed that there was not a significant impact. However, the commission denied your application based on traffic and noise. Together, those 2 things create a significant impact. The potential noise at your business was determined to be 163 decibels. That is very, very, very loud. The code only allows 65 decibels. So your business is going to be 3 times as noisy as is allowed under the city code. And so based on all of those things, that's why this commission denied your application. But you are able to appeal to the city council and bring up these issues to them. But there is no more further discussion here with the commission, okay?
All right.
Thank you, sir.
She wanted to translate.
Yes, could you please translate that?
Yeah, so, lo que dijo es que no hicieron denio a la aplicación solo por el tráfico. Cuando hicieron uno de los estudios, la combinación del ruido y el tráfico hizo un impacto bien fuerte, es 163 decibels, y eso es 3 más... El... 3 times the... Yeah. So, lo que permiten en esa área es 65, y el estudio regresó con 163. La combinación del ruido y del tráfico es la razón que no se puede aprobar la aplicación. Pero también, otra vez, para decirles que sí tienen 10 días para meter un appeal para el city council.
Thank you.
Gracias.
So before we move on to reports of officers, if any of the commissioners would like to entertain a motion to excuse Kevin Rooney from tonight's meeting, and offer that opportunity...
Yeah, I would like to excuse Kevin Rooney.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes 3-0. Excuse me, we're going to move on to reports of officers.
Okay. Very well. Thank you, commissioners. So, at the city council meeting on July 17th, Commissioner Mario Maciel was replaced with Christopher Garrido. So we'd like to thank Mario Maciel for his service on the planning commission. I know in discussions with city staff that have been here, he has served on for several years, and we want to thank him for his service for those years on the planning commission and assisting the city with future development and his coordination with working with staff. I'd also like to add that we received word from Chairman Rooney with the potential that he'll be resigning, submitting a letter of resignation, but we'll notify the commission of that. At that point, at future meetings, we'll advise the commission. We do have a commission meeting scheduled for August 8th and also August 24th, and that's all we have to report.
So we should look to nominate a chair and vice chair at that next couple of meetings?
That is correct, yes. So when we get to that point, we'll get to the point of nomination of the chair and vice chair.
Any additional communication? So I want to thank you all for joining us tonight, and thank you, staff. Thank you, my fellow commissioners. Thank you, Robert, for joining us. I now close this commission meeting at 8:07 p.m.
Hi, I'm so sorry. I just have a really quick question. I guess my neighbor told me about the first case that you guys had, and I do apologize, I went to the wrong building, so I wasn't here in time, but she does have a little concern about the 5 condominiums that's going to be built behind her house. She doesn't speak English well, and she needs a translator, that's why she asked me to come here.
Yeah, so, I'm so sorry. So the resolution was passed, but this is going off to the city council, so everything is going to be passed off at the city council. I do encourage you guys to show up to that meeting to voice your concerns. You can also write to city staff. Ron is back here, he might be able to tell you when this will be brought to city council.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.